I'd like to call the particular meeting of the Village Board of the Village of Germantown to order on February 7th at 7:07 PM. This meeting has been given to this notice in accordance with Section 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin State Statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all are present. President Walter and Trustees Hudson and Trustee Jan Miller are in attendance via WebEx. At this time, a motion for a pro tem, a chair pro tem would be in order, please.
Motion for trustee Baum to be president pro tem.
Motion by trustee Kaminski, second by trustee Myers to elect trustee Baum as chair pro tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Trustee Baum, would you mind setting over here?
Sure. Next item is the pledgeable agents. If you all stand and join me in the pledge. Pledgeable agents. Since I was not expecting to be doing this, I don't have anything to report. President Walter, do you have anything you want to say before we start? I don't see him, I don't hear him. Right, seeing as President Walter is not communicating right now, we will come back to that if we need to. Announcements of forthcoming events in public interest, committee and department reports. The following individuals have been given opportunity to make announcements of future municipal activities. We will start with trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will meet in this room on Tuesday, March 1st, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet on February 21st at 6:00 PM in this boardroom.
Thank you. Trustee Miller. Trustee Meyer.
Easier. The next public safety meeting will be March 7th at 6:00 PM in this room.
Can I make an announcement about the next election?
Yes, you may.
There will be election and a primary election on February 15th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This is a primary for school board. The village hall is open for absentee voting from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM for the rest of this week. And if a voter wants to make a request for an absentee ballot, they can do so at myvote.wy.gov through Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from board members, directors, anybody? No? Next item on the agenda is citizen input and public appearance of items not subject to a public hearing. I do not see any public hearings on the agenda, so anybody wishing to come forward for something may come up at this time. Anybody wishing to come forward? Nobody's leaning forward to make the motion? Okay, we will move on to item 7, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda from A to I.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there anything that would like to be polled?
I'd like to poll G and H.
Items G and H. Okay, so we have a motion to approve A through I minus G and H. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Wait, no, there's money.
It's a roll call vote. So, go ahead.
Trustee Myers. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
I saw him say aye.
Aye.
He's nodding his head, yes.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Saw aye there, too.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
See him or hear him?
I would say motion carries. Oh, there, he's nodding his head. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, we're having somebody check with our IT people on the sound issue. All right, so trustee Peeper, you had item G. Let's start with that.
I'm just curious, can we get some more information on the G and the H? I was under the impression that we were saving a ton of money by digging the well shallow, but now it says that we're exceeding the amount that we had planned for. Just want some clarification on that.
Director Retacek is coming to the podium. Moment to get up here and collect his thoughts.
So, you're curious on H then for the well?
G.
Well, she was referring to going through the shallow well and reduction of payment. That would be dealing with H. G would just deal with the booster station.
So, the booster station's being put in, does this have anything to do with the possibility of extending water and sewer to Richfield?
The booster station was planned from day one with the improvements to the Holy Hill area due to the height of the earth there. The current water system in this area can't supply the pressure to the water tower at the Germantown height even on Rockfield and Gateway Crossing. So, the booster station was always planned. G was the extension. When we installed the current auxiliary pump that's at the booster station on Goldendale Road, we didn't extend the water main into the building because we were going to include it in the building package. When we bid out the building, the one time we bid it out, it came back at a really high bid, and so we were going to redesign the building, but we still needed the water main there. The water main at that point was around $41,000 in that bid. I took a request for proposal from the contractor that did the Santeran Sewer and Water Main this year on Holy Hill Road, and he gave us a quote of $27,000. So, I took that low quote and had the water main installed into and up by the ground, which would be for the building. Excuse me. Estimated that that $41,000 that was bid almost two years ago would probably be about $50,000 today with the cost increases due to COVID and supplies. So, that's what the change order of $27,000 was for on letter G on the consent agenda.
Question, is that in the, up on Holy Hill Road, up in the water tower up there? Or is that in the building that's on Goldendale?
No, there's no building. West side. All we have is the green head of the pump, the submersible pump that's in there right now. The building's just west of that. If you drive down the hill, you'll see two pipes come out of the ground. That's going to be in the building.
If somebody could just help me understand the administrative background on this. If we always planned for it, then why do we need a change order?
It was a change order to a current project. So, the original project on Holy Hill and Gold, on Holy Hill Road for the sewer and water extension this year did not include this water main installation.
What if it was always planned, why didn't it include it then?
It was planned to be constructed with the booster station, building and pumps and generator package. And we found out that when we bid it as a part of the building package, the builder, because it was a smaller sections of water main, they got a really high bid on it. And this contractor, I just took a chance, this contractor was looking for some work. His equipment was down here, and he gave us a very good, very reasonable cost, 45% less than I think it would have cost if we had bid it out with the building or did it a few years ago. So, the change order is dealing, we change ordered that work for the booster station onto the Holy Hill Sewer and Water Main project. That's where the change order comes in.
So, if I may paraphrase, we originally wanted it included in that building on Goldendale Road.
Correct.
Was expensive at that point, so we pulled it out of that building, forward with the building, but never moved forward with the pump, as it was always too expensive.
But we have it budgeted.
That's not quite correct. So, the booster station building would be the building, the pumps, and the generator, okay? And this extension, this water main that this change order covered was to extend the water main about 25 feet from where it ended with the auxiliary pump into it, up into the building and up into the building. And when we bid the building out the first time around, that piece of water main came back at $41,000. So, now when we rebuild the building, rebid the building probably this year yet, we won't bid that, this water main won't be in that bid anymore. So, we took advantage of what I think was a very, very good, very comparative number to get the water main placed in the ground.
And then for item H.
So, item H, I'm just bringing forward that this is the final payment for the well. I don't have all the backup, I don't think, with me here. I have some from memory. It is over, oh, here it is, right here. It is over the original bid, but all the change orders for the total change orders, total 19,458, there were three change orders. All those were brought to the Public Works Committee and to the Village Board. It was all being brought as the work was being done. And probably 99 to 100% of that money is dealing with the testing requirements to show to the DNR based on their requirements of our testing we had to do. All that money was basically due to the testing. Now, the savings we talked about with that well is that we don't have to do the radium removal with, seeing that that well tested out with no radium in the water. The deep well would have had for sure radium removal. The equipment for that is in the between 900, 800 to 900,000. Depending on bidding time, it could have been a million dollars. This shallow well also estimates that we're going to reduce our operating, annual operating costs by about $62,000 by having the shallow well. So, savings come, not with the well going in, savings come with the building, reduce costs for size of pumps, operating costs, and no radium removal.
So, just for clarification sake for the residents, did Washington County or Richfield pay for any of these, the change orders, or put money towards them?
No, no, because we would need to do this if it was just, if it ends up just being a Germantown water system only, this all had to be done anyway.
Thank you.
President Walter, you were looking to make a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Excellent. So, Larry, based on how you originally had the building bid and it was going to cost $41,000, and now because it was removed and we're still going to be bidding the building, is this really more of a savings? And is it a change order based on a savings rather than additional?
Yes. So, we did the same work that the $41,000 bid included right now for 27,000. But if you were to take the change in materials and costs of bidding right now, that $41,000 is probably, would have probably closer to $50,000 today. It's just, everything has just gone up drastically as far as construction costs. So, actually, for what we had done this year, it's still $14,000 cheaper than what it was bid for a year and a half ago.
And is it more of a change order because it's been separated away from the bid from what was part of the building contract?
No, it's a change order because we're change ordering this work onto the Holy Hill Water Main and Santeran Sewer Extension Contract. That's the contractor that gave us a favorable quote to do this work for $27,000. So, to add it to his contract, we legally have to do it through a change order process.
Right. Okay, I got it.
See further discussion. Motion to approve G and H. Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All vote then.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item 8, unfinished business. This would be Resolution 07-2022, jurisdictional transfer of County Trunk Highway F, Freistadt Road and Wasaki Road. Village Administrator, Mr. Krecklow.
This is an item that was on the agenda originally in first meeting, so the last meeting in December, I believe, where we had been having some discussions with the county highway commissioner regarding an exchange of some segments of the village, some cash considerations. The proposed exchange, the village would take responsibility for Freistadt Road, County F, from Wasaki to Fond du Lac. It's about 2 and 2/3 miles. That is currently rated and maintained by the county, and the county would take over one mile of Wasaki Road. In exchange for that, under the initial proposal, the county would have made a one-time payment to the village of $615,000. That was based on approximately $250,000 per mile replacement costs. After some further discussions as requested by the village board in December, looking at some of ancillary equipment, culverts, as well as the plans to put in some recreational trail or sidewalk along Freistadt, the county to increase that $250,000 per mile to $275,000 per mile, which would make the payment that would come to the village $691,500 instead of $615,000. In addition, the tax levy related to the maintenance of stretch of highway, which the State Department of Revenue sets, but would probably be about $20,000 per year, would transfer from the county to the village, and transportation aids, which would also be in the range of, this is a rough estimate, but $25,000 to $50,000 per year would come to the village. I guess if the village, as the village board is considering this, the biggest advantage I see to the village of taking Freistadt and control over the future design configuration that stretch of road is part of the long-term bike trail, recreational trail plan for the village. Our, one section of Freistadt that is operated and maintained by the village already has a bike trail on it. The village or the authority and for the design and roll over what that looks like when eventually it is replaced. So, provides hopefully a good overview and update. Find any, just any questions that you might have.
Motion to approve unfinished business A.
Do I hear a second? Motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Knight Rider.
Steve, when does the, if the Washington County Board of Supervisors approves this, when does the money transfer take place? Does it go all at one time? Is it scattered or?
We would, as far as operations occur, we would, what we did in the past when we did this for Goldendale is once it was approved by both boards, when we finalized the actual mode, we transferred it in a change of seasons so that they continued operations. I think in that case, they continued operations through the winter, over in the spring. Looking at the timeline here, I don't know if we would be prepared to take over for summer or maybe next fall. Seasonal operations change, then flop those and make sure that the crews are aware and able to.
And the dollars transfer at that same time then, or when the agreement is approved?
Dollars transfer when the agreement is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Meyer.
What was that, new total amounts, Steve, please?
$691,500.
Thank you. Further questions? Trustee Rick Miller.
As I said when we discussed this last meeting, I'm in opposition to this. I just don't see why we would take on additional burden of roads. 1.66 miles isn't a lot, I get that. We are getting compensated for some of it, but again, this is a highly traveled road, 3,500 cars a day. And, you know, we have to take on that burden then for the rest of time. So, I just don't think this is a good idea.
President Walter, I saw your hand up.
So, Steve, can you explain why it went up from 6:15 to 6:91? Did you explain that in the beginning and I just missed it? Or why is there a difference in value now?
We did, following the last village board meeting, where the board raised some concerns about the number of culverts, retaining walls, the expense of putting in some pedestrian or bike facilities. I did take that back to the county, and after further consideration of those items, it did increase the reimbursement per lane mile from 250,000 to 275,000.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Steve, my understanding is that we had a budget for bike and trails for park and recreation for 2022, and that was taken out of the budget. So, right now, is that correct?
The Parks Department did include in their capital budget request, I believe it was $30,000 for the development, a recreational trail plan. We did take that out of the capital budget because it's not a bondable expense. Kind of a trail, of a trail or something that would lead to construction would be bondable, but that particular study was not bondable. So, it was, it was taken out of the capital budget. Did have some conversations during the budget process with the board as that was an item that was under consideration, put back into the operating budget, that did not happen. There are some other alternatives that we're looking at to finance that plan.
So, right now, I'm really not interested in this transfer because we do not have a bike or trail plan. It was taken out for 2022, and until we have a plan, I don't see why, and if that, if this is a great target for a bike trail or something like that, we don't have a strategic plan for putting that in, why would we take it on? I, so I, I don't think it's worth the expense right now. I think we have other things that we need to accomplish before we take on any other roads. Thank you.
Trustee Hudson, did you have a comment? Okay, trustee Meyer. Microphone's not on.
Steve, did you say that we would get, with the two aids, we would get around $50,000 more by taking on that road?
Similar to the Goldendale transfer, the way the State Department of Revenue calculates the levy limits is when the responsibility for operations of a, of a asset like a road is transferred, the tax levy associated with maintaining that is transferred. We would get approximately $20,000 per year. Freistadt Road, that's based on the DOR estimates. In addition, we would get the transportation aids associated with Freistadt Road. In very rough numbers, you get the impact from Goldendale, say that'd be in the range of $25,000 to $50,000 per year, in addition to the 20.
Would that be a total of $50,000?
In that ballpark, yes.
And in the discussion that I had with the highway commissioner, he thought that the road would not need any replacement for five years. Then I looked at the highway, Washington County, in regard to their maps, in regard to when they were going to change different roads, and it was pretty much concurrent in regard to that. So, basically speaking, within five years, we could have $250,000 extra money for that particular road to actually, in essence, put in a bike trail per se. Just rough guess off the top of my head.
President Walter, did you want to talk again?
Yeah, in comment to what trustee Jan Miller had mentioned about the removal of the funds for the bike paths in this year's budget, I think it's important to mention that there are paths already out there that are in a planned state. In fact, if you look at the GIS system, you can see the plan for the different bike paths, and part of it does go down. Freistadt Road is a connectivity coming down from the corner of Holy Hill and kind of bringing it through into that area. I think what control this road does, not only in regards to what it brings to our levy, but it also gives us control of the road so that when we plan the bike paths, we have, you know, more of a say in where they can go, what size they can be, and where we can place them than if we would have to work with or deal with the county to do any of that. So, I like the idea of having it under our control for that reason, even though it's not funded this year. It doesn't mean that it can't be funded in other means, whether it be from the federal dollars that we're getting for COVID or in future budgets. Let's, you know, let's, let's think that we're not going to build that path all in one year anyways, and it's going to take probably anywhere from five to seven years to create anything that totally has a connection from one side of the, of the village to the other. But with this road under our control, it gives us more ability to plan that and have control of those lands rather than having to deal with or deal with some sort of purchase from the county for a bike path that would be in that area.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, a couple things. In the, in the county plan, there was a plan for a bike path, but it was going to be an on-road bike path the next time that they resurface it, which I believe was scheduled for 2025, somewhere around that area. So, it would have been just, you know, one of those paved paths on the side of the road. Now, most of the bicyclists that are on there are these, you know, these groups that go five, six in a pack and are, you know, going past my house at about 35 miles an hour. So, I don't think they'd be using the bike path for what they do. The other question I had was, you had said that we will get compensated for this, however, we're losing Wasaki Road for about a mile. Now, that would transfer back to the county. Is that the net difference?
Yes, yes, those are the numbers. Sorry, if I, if I could add just a little bit of information about the bike paths, and I, and let me just say, I do understand all the comments, and I do think if we did have the overall bike plan done, it would be beneficial to this decision. I completely understand that as well. This is, this is before us in this opportunity, and bike plan is not yet complete. I think to the extent that county would do this, it would be a road or basically like a paved shoulder type of a situation. I think that with the residential development, it's the eastern part of Freistadt with Renwood, Harvest Hills, there would be some opportunities to also, if you had some grant funds for, for example, a for example, the Hill standards, the parks director's been looking at this a little bit. Some residential parks and schools, School Fireman's Park. Also be some grant opportunities to try to get some off-road. That would be more designed for families and children and not necessarily the road bike. Probably gonna probably should go on the roads anyways instead of biking.
Further discussion? No further discussion. Have a motion and a second, and this will be a general vote. Vote call vote, okay.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
No.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that, we will move on to new business item A. Certified survey map to reconfigure existing parcel boundaries for Florian at North one one one, West one eight six one one, Mecklenburg Road and Country Inn and Suites, West one eighty eight, North one one oh two oh, Maple Road for Ryan Rawl, agent for Apex Hotel Investments.
Thank you.
Director Retschloff, this is your issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan Rawl, agent for Apex Hotel Investments and Willow Creek, Willow View Investments, seeking approval of a two lot certified survey map to relocate the common property line between the two properties. As shown on the screen, the proposal is essentially to transfer four acres of land from the Country Inn and Suites property to the Florian Event Venue Property located on Lanin Road. And in undo what was done effectively back in twenty sixteen, where we had a CSM that we approved that did the opposite. So they're going back to the way the way things were back in twenty sixteen with more land for the Florian Event Property. And the only reason given was a nonspecific plan for future expansion of the activities on the Florian. The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve with two conditions requiring some minor corrections to the CSM prior to recording. Thank you.
Commissioners, our trustees.
Motion to approve. Better a new business.
I'll second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Discussion, okay.
Trustee Baum.
Yes. Trustee Knight Rider.
Just a question that, when was this split done the last time, Jeff?
Twenty sixteen.
Now, when you look at it, realistically, if if they want to expand at Country Inn and Suites, they've just killed themselves. So are they going to come back again in a few years when they want to expand to move the line again? Is is this being done for financial reasons or just strictly that the Florian needs that much more space to get their venue outside a little bit?
Again, the information provided by the property owners is simply to provide an opportunity for more activities on the Florian Event Property. You will notice that the lion's share of the property that's being transferred back is essentially wet and and unusable. So to what extent that provides for more activities, it remains to be seen. Originally in twenty sixteen, the owner told us that, yes, they were making the switch to add land to the Country Inn and Suites property in anticipation of possibly expanding the hotel. Apparently, that's no longer the case, and they want to undo what they did back in twenty sixteen. And yes, they could go back and forth as long as we let them to do so. And I don't see at this point any reason why we wouldn't.
Thank you.
Discussion.
To approve.
Have a motion and a second. No further discussion. General vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Get opposed? None, all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item B, certified survey map to modify lot lines for Robert and Rhoda Hoff, property owners of West one nine nine, North one one five two five, Rosewood Avenue.
But I won't.
So the applicant and property owners of lots two and seven of the Woodland Manor subdivision are proposing a two lot certified survey map to modify the boundary between these two lots. The site is zoned RS five and is completely surrounded by RS five zoning. The purpose of this modification is to enlarge the lot with the single family dwelling and to sell the second lot on the left-hand side of your screen there as a buildable lot for a single family dwelling. The proposed CSM will move the west lot line approximately fifty feet to the west as shown on your screen. The resulting lots will meet the minimum lot size of fifteen hundred square feet in the RS five district. There are currently three detached accessory structures on the property. As part of this process, the property owners are required to come into compliance with the accessory structure regulations for the RS five district, which allows for one detached accessory structure up to one percent of the size of the lot. The property owners are working with staff to complete that, but it has been added as a condition of approval. So the Plan Commission recommends approval of the two lot certified survey map to modify the boundaries between lots two and seven of the Woodland Manor subdivision with two conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Ent. Trustees?
Motion to approve new business B.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. All in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item C, resolution amendment to the Neviaser Plan Development District, resolution number nineteen sixteen for Odyssey Hotel Group LLC, agent and property owner of the Holiday Inn Express at West one seven seven, North nine six seven five, Rivers Bend Lane. Director Retschloff.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Trustee Baum, sorry.
Whoever whoever I am. I'll work with you.
Habit. A little background, back in nineteen seventy four, the village created the Neviaser Plan Development District, one of our first ones, actually in nineteen seventy seven, to facilitate a seventy-four room hotel construction, which is now the Holiday Inn located off of County Line Road as shown in the screen highlighted in green. That's properties owned by the Odyssey Hotel Group. Back in twenty sixteen, they came before us seeking permission to expand the hotel as part of a potential rebranding. They knew back then they were going to be going through this around this time, five, six years later. So they got out ahead of it and planned accordingly. They told us that they were planning on expanding the hotel from two to four floors and going from seventy-four to as many as a hundred and thirty rooms. And in so doing, I needed some changes to the original Neviaser Plan Development District, which we made and granted them the ability to expand up to a hundred and thirty rooms, up to fifty feet in height on the building height, which would accommodate up to four floors. We allowed them to install additional or required additional parking stalls of them and made some changes to the parking stall size, et cetera. Now, the second property that's involved in this is the one highlighted in red owned by A and R Capital. Ratchet Dingra, representing both owners, is a member of both ownership groups. They acquired the property around twenty sixteen with the intent of providing an off-site parking area as part of the hotel expansion on the north side of that parking lot that serves the Buffalo Wild Wings and the multi-tenant commercial retail center off of County Line Road. At that time, there's a separate Plan Development District that was created that enabled that development to take place. The site highlighted in red was the former golf course. It's now owned by A and R Capital, it's sitting idle, it's not being used at this point. And as part of this project, again, a portion of the north side of that parking lot is intended to be used for an off-site parking lot in support of the hotel expansion. Back in twenty sixteen, there were a couple of plans for the size and number of stalls for that off-site parking area, depending upon the number of rooms. There was a hundred and twenty-three guest room option, and there was a hundred and thirty guest room option with as many as fifty-eight additional parking stalls to be constructed on the north side of that existing parking lot. Now, back then, some of the graphics or renderings that were presented is in support of the potential rebranding are shown on the screen. The the current proposal, as of twenty twenty-two, is to expand the hotel, but not as much. The proposal is to go from two to three floors, just one floor expansion, and from seventy-four to one hundred rooms, a total of additional twenty-six, but not up to the maximum a hundred and thirty that the amendments would allow. So they're seeking some changes to that PDD amendment that was amended back in twenty sixteen to accommodate this new scaled-back hotel expansion proposal, including revising language, dealing with the number of parking stalls, dealing with the general development plan, and also accommodating or including a new plan for landscaping and a fence to be installed along that north side of the off-site parking lot on the property to the west. As shown here, the new rebranding that's proposed is to go to a Fairfield Marriott's Fairfield Inn and Suites option. Again, three floors, but they're making significant exterior modifications and also interior modifications. Construction is intended to begin later this year, subject to these approvals. The Plan Commission has recommended approval of the Plan Development District Amendments and also approves site and development plans, building plans for the proposed expansion and exterior modifications to the building. And that pretty much sums up the proposal for the Plan Development District Amendment.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. I should point out that at the Plan Commission meeting, the Plan Commission recommended approval of a fence to be installed along the north side of the parking lot, subject to revised plans showing that fence to be presented to the Plan Commission at their meeting in March. And that requirement is reflected in this Plan Development District Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees?
Motion to approve letter C, new business.
Motion, we're second. A motion and a second, further discussion? See Kaminsky.
Quick question, this went through a public hearing, correct, at the Plan Commission?
Yes, it did.
Okay, and this the only thing that really came up was a fence to give it a little bit more separation?
Yes, there was concern on the part of the residents in Rivers Bend with regard to the the parking lot and the fact that the golf course that had a planned building never was constructed that would have provided some buffering. So now there's nothing there, effectively, there's a small berm on the east side. This plan includes modifying the landscaping on the berm by adding more landscaping and then installing that privacy fence along the north side of the parking lot to buffer the view between the parking lot and the Rivers Bend resident.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Jan Miller, you had a comment, question?
Yes. The the plan that's going to be coming up to for approval for the fence also included shrubs, is that correct?
Yes, I've talked with the developer, and I had hoped to have a plan last Friday, but they have not submitted one yet.
Okay.
Their plan is to include the privacy fence, eight foot tall, and also including landscaping on along the south side in sort of clusters of landscaping, evergreen shrubs along the the south side.
Questions? Start with trustee Meyer.
Thank you. I was one of the three trustees that was at that meeting, not county Plan Commission trustees. And there was a lot of discussion in regard to the fence and where it would actually be as such. So I would be very interested when they do come back with their drawings in regard and go back to the Plan Commission to actually see just exactly what that's going to look like. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, that was the pretty much the whole point of bringing it back to the Plan Commission was so that everybody would have an opportunity to see it, provide some feedback, and the Plan Commission would make the final call on approving the fence. Again, eight eight foot tall, privacy fence, landscaping along the south side, and it will be set back ten to fifteen feet from the edge of the pavement to provide for snow storage. Thank you, Jeff.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, just a question on the parking lot, is that's going to be on parcel that's owned by A and R Capital?
Yes.
Is that right?
Well, actually, the the existing parking lot, the north section of stalls is already subject of an easement that was granted to the A and R Capital parcel. And they're just using those stalls, there's not, they're actually not installing any new pavement.
There's no additional?
No, they're just going to do some minor restriping. They're relocating that dumpster that's enclosure that's in there, getting rid of that and converting that to two additional stalls. But they're just sort of cleaning up the area on that north side, finishing it off, so.
And that's controlled by an easement, so there shouldn't be any issue if, let's say, they sell off that golf course parcel. And the the hotel still has access to those parking spots?
Well, the easement is to the golf course property.
The golf course property.
And the owner of the golf course is is part of the same ownership group of the hotel property.
Well, right now, but, you know, who knows in in future? And they're they're proposing to add. It looked like they were proposing to add parking stalls, now you're saying it really isn't adding.
No, they're just going to be doing some restriping.
So is that like a common parking lot then that can be used for any of those?
Yes, they're cross-access and shared parking easements on both sides of the parking area for Wild Wings and the multi-tenant and the golf course.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Further questions, further comments? Village Attorney.
I guess just to that point, include a requirement that they change that easement. Golf course and the golf course is sold. Hotel continues to have.
Okay.
So included in my motion.
How should that be stated in the record?
This to include a condition to include a cross-access and parking easement benefit the hotel parcel.
Okay. Is that okay with the second? Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, gee, I gotta slow down. Opposed? None, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item D, appointments to the Independence Day Committee. Who's running this? Dean, is that you or is that village administrator?
Well, I can start. Board members, I'm sure recall that at the last meeting, the board to create an Independence Day Committee to work on finding additional and individuals to volunteer to to help take some of the burden off of the Chamber of Commerce in Kiwanis for organizing the Fourth of July. activities. We did, working with the Chamber and Kiwanis and our own social media to try to cover this. Local news did try to solicit some volunteers. We did have three trustees who volunteered and we did receive some citizen volunteers as well. So President, Board of some, sit at this meeting. Senator.
Mr. President, do you want to step in and make those appointments?
I'm sure. My recommendation would be to recommend trustee Jan Miller, trustee Phil Hudson, and trustee Dennis Myers as members of the Fourth of July Committee.
Have those, that motion? We have a, it's not a motion, that's a recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
Do it.
Make a motion to approve those three appointments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously.
Then my second recommendation would be to add, did you say three resident volunteers, Steve?
Yes, we did receive mailers contacts from three residents who are sitting participating.
Could you read their names, please?
Just a moment to.
And while you're doing that, how long is this appointment? Is this a one-year thing? Is it a three-year thing?
Right now, we go for a one-year thing because we have to get it off the ground and get organization going for this year's parade. I think that's first and foremost, to me, of importance. After that, it could be established of longer service, but I don't know. Brian, did we write it as anything beyond one year or did we write any terms into the, into the, how this committee functions?
We didn't write anything into the specifics, so I think you could put a year on the initial appointments.
Okay.
Okay. So it'll be a one-year appointment to start with and we will figure it out as we move. Do we, do we?
Yes. I have the, I have the names of the three individuals who expressed interest in participating. Al Shira, Lynn Dole, Roberts.
Okay, those are the three citizen appointments.
My recommendations from the village president to include those in the, in the Fourth of July Committee.
Is a motion?
I don't make the motion. You do. I make the recommendation.
Make a motion to appoint those three citizens to the Independence Day Committee.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Trustee Hudson?
I believe Chief Snow has also asked to be on this committee.
Chief Snow? Do we?
I would, it's up to the, to the village board and the president. I obviously, I think the chief, fire chief, and some of the public works staff are going to be very involved. It's up to the board as to whether it's appropriate to appoint them to the committee or have them participate in the committee of staff.
I would put that more as a supportive role and not as a member of the committee because they would be a supportive role in regards to street closings. And Public Works is also a part of that, putting up the barriers for street closings and making sure the facility at the, at the park and everything is set and ready to go for any of the vendors that would be there.
Okay.
And then with that, I would also recommend that, that we would require, not require, but we would request the help of Kiwanis and Lynn Gurgic of the Chamber to help guide us and to give us their recommendations of what they've done over the past year so that we're not rebuilding that wheel from the ground up. We have some sort of framework or guidance at least to follow and use or not use whatever their recommendations were in the past.
Certainly, certainly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item E, Village Board 2022 Goals.
Right, and I could take this. There's been some discussion and we had some with the enclosed session of the, of the goals of the village administrator. And with that, there's been some additional discussions of, you know, what are the goals of the village board? What should be our goals for 2022? What do we want to accomplish? Well, that should really, since we are kind of the head of the village administrator, and he takes a lot of his, his orders from us, not only in regards to budget and, and process, but also in the sense of how we set the criteria for his, his review and, and his raise. And it really should coincide then with goals that are of the village board. So if the village board wants to accomplish certain goals within the year, it should also be part of the goals for the village administrator as well. So they go hand in glove together. And some of the things that were discussed as possibility and have been brought out before as possible goals, and I think they should be important goals of the village board as well, is employee retention has been a paramount issue within the village. We've had a fair amount of turnover. We've discussed it at previous meetings of where our turnover is and what percentage of that is. We also know that we have some issues with what I would call resident trust, the trust within the board, the information that they're getting, the manner of communication in which we, we present the information to them and which they're able to get it, and knowing that that information is, is, you know, is worth the trust, that it's correct, it's proper, and that it has a single message coming from. So if the message comes from the village board, it also comes from the village staff. Not that we have an issue with that, but it's important that that communication is constant and consistent, and that helps to build trust within the residents. Another thing that goes hand in hand with the building of resident trust is communication. And what is a better way to, you know, communicate what are, what we're trying to do within the village and the village boards, not only through the different types of, of things that are coming forward, whether it be development or it be road repair or, or, you know, the MOU with the sewer and water going to Richfield? How do we communicate that, the importance of those meetings that come forward? How do we do it in a timely, you know, method? And what message are we using? What communication methods are we using to get that information out? And again, making sure that the message is consistent through all, all the communication sources that we use and there is no conflict or confusion within that message. And that also goes back then to number two, which then helps build trust within the residents. So I wanted the village board to think about what should be our goals for 2022 and then how we want to use those goals as part of the administrators' goals going forward so that everybody's working in the same direction. Not only does it then go to the village administrator, but it then would then transfer down to the department heads, and the department heads would take it down to the staff. And the true benefit of all of that consistency from village board to administrator to department heads to the staff is a benefit to the residents. That's what we're really here to do. That's, that's our purpose. That's our point. We're a service group. We're, the board is, is service to the community. How are we providing that service and how are we communicating, you know, that message to the people so they know what's available for them in not only regards to services, but within changes or development of their village? So I open it up to questions or comments. It's a discussion. We can come up with a list tonight if you like, or we can create a framework and then flush it out from there. But the top three that come to my mind are employee retention, resident trust, and communication as I think that we should look at it as goals. And when we set them, they should be realistic. They should be achievable, not just we want to better communicate. Okay, how do, how do we better communicate? How are we going to build resident trust? What things are we going to look to put in place to help hold employee retention? Some of that is the merit-based evaluations that we're going through now, you know, the reviews that, that are being held, not only from Steve to department heads, but from department heads to staff. What, what is our measure to, to, to put out there so that we know that we've reached it and we have achieved this goal rather than some sort of gray nebulous idea of we want more employee retention and now we have no way to measure how that happens? So any, any thoughts? Just kind of looking for, for some bounce back, you know, some, some back and forth here.
Trustee Meyer.
Let me try this. Mr. President, when you asked to have the Turb people of the three committees sit down with Steve, what you actually talked about this evening in your presentation were the ones that we actually talked about and came up with at that particular meeting as such. So that would be a good start in regard to that aspect. The other thing I might put up, talk about is our 2050 plan that we have, be able to have more public meetings with the virus has kind of set us back. So this costs us a little bit more money with the consultants to be able to have more input from the people. I would like to see that also.
Yeah, well, if you're going to put that as a goal, then I would, and I don't disagree with that, trustee Myers, but it then should have some sort of end game to it that we would like the 2050 plan approved by X date. And before that X date, there should have two or whatever number of, of public meetings to help communicate that information, you know, to the residents. Again, going back to, you know, communication, but I agree with you that I like the idea of a goal being the 2050 plan, but I'd also like to see a date as to when we'd like that to be accomplished. And perhaps Director Retzloff has an idea of what's been proposed and then we can kind of, we could use that as a goal as to we want it done by, if it's June 30th or, or whatever it is, you know, we could, we could propose that, that completion date by that time.
I was going to say, Mr. President, you actually read my mind because I was going to say June 30th with two additional meetings, minimum of two additional meetings with the public for input.
Okay. And I don't have a problem with that as one of the lists, but I'm, I'm willing to listen to what other trustees think about our goals matching the village administrator and what you think, you know, we should have as, as a list of the goals for the village board. It provides a direction for us and it also provides a synergy that carries through all the way from one department to the next through the village as well. That way, everybody knows what the village board is looking to achieve in 2022. Otherwise, you get the thought of, well, from what they're saying, we think that they, they want this. Or what was said at the last meeting, we'll perceive that as this is the direction they want to go. Where if we had some clear set goals of, of three or four goals, then it's very clear as this is what we want to accomplish in 2022. And everybody that's working for us or with us, then they know exactly, you know, what we're looking to do and there's no, there's no perception, there's no interpretation, there's no, there's no gray. It's very clear and concise.
Trustee Hudson?
David, can I?
Yeah.
I can hear you, yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm strongly supportive of this. I, I think four is, is an ideal number of goals to have. I, I think that's a wonderful idea. I think two of the goals are, are, are very good because they're easy to measure. I think the, the employee retention goal, that's fairly easy to do. We can take last year's turnover rate and measure it against this year's turnover rate. Or we can look at last year's turnover rate and establish a goal that we think we should have for 2022. Getting the 2050 plan done is also a, a very good goal because it's, it's very specific. It's time-bound, it's very measurable. I, I strongly agree with the, the resident trust and the communication issues. I, I do struggle a little bit with how we make those measurable. So I, I don't know how to measure an increase in resident trust or, or, or a better line of communication. So if, if we do choose to undertake, if we do choose to go down those, the, the tracks of those two, two goals, we just have to be very specific because at the end of the year, we do want to come up with a metric that said, yes, we made this. No, we didn't make this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hudson.
Further discussion? I think one, one comment I would make on the communication issue is how do we get the word out to the public on things that we are contemplating? When I hear other organizations, they just seem to have a word of mouth that just gets out and goes everywhere. If something is going on with the school board and the residents don't like it, the residents are getting the word out somehow, some way via email, via electronic communication. How do we get that same level of communication out to the residents of, I've heard the complaints that the 2050 plan, nobody knows about it. So nobody knows when there's meetings, nobody knows what we're doing, nobody knows why we're doing it. So how do we get that word out to everybody? Something I'd like to see. Trustee Meyer.
If I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, you did come up with a newsletter at one time to the residents. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we periodically produce a newsletter. Haven't found that to be, I think, I would say not as successful in getting word out and getting people informed about events as, as opposed to the level of effort that went in. I think one, one, I need to measure this, be to look at the amount of traffic that we get on the village website, the number of subscribers that we get on the village website, number of social media pages, Facebook, X store, Twitter account that we, I think it is, it is something we, very important. It's difficult to measure, but those are some options. Communicating with the public.
One of the things I was going to mention is, is if there's some highlights and we have some dates in regard to different things, sending postcards to, to the residents, all the residents, because what you mentioned is such as a way of doing it, but when we're talking about close to 21,000 people that we represent, a postcard is, from the post office, is a cheap way of doing this. And we could be doing this either quarterly or whenever as needed per se. And then you're going to get the input, you're going to highlight the items that you want them to look at and a source where they can go to, to actually put their input in. That's my thought.
All right, and go ahead.
Trustee Miller. Jan Miller.
Thanks, thanks. I'm very much in, in agreement with writing goals. I think that residence trust is very important. We are, as President Walter said, we are here as service members. So how do you measure it? First of all, one of the goals I would do is clean up the website, make the website friendly, make anything that's important, put it on the front page. And if you try to find the 2050 plan to add some sort of detail, it's very, it, it's not intuitive. And I think that we can do a better job doing that. Other communities probably use social media and they are very successful at it. They're, they could be using LinkedIn, they could be using other social medium. But just getting subscribers doesn't necessarily mean that people are reading everything. I think that we have a lot of tools on the website that are buried that need to be put forward and easy to grab, such as all the apps that you can put on your phone. That is a real easy thing to do. So communication is important. I'm, I'm concerned about employee retention as well and the 2050 plan. I was going to recommend that as well. We need more public meetings. I think the the village board should just have a meeting on on the 2050 plan and understand the tool and understand how it works and be able to communicate that to anyone in their district that asks about it and where to find it. So I I I think we need the goals. I like the four goals, and I think we need measurements. Thank you.
Trustee Hudson, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I took it down.
Okay. President Walter.
Yeah, a couple of things. I I I agree with the four goals, anything and more is becomes harder to to manage and and measure or come up with measurements. And anything less, it 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 doesn't make any sense at anything else. They're not really goals or just something that you want. But i- in regards to, I I agree with Trustee Hudson in regards to to employee retention. I think we should put a number on it, whether it be, we don't want to lose, you know, half as many, or we want to keep it to, you know, within 25% of of what it was last year, whatever, but that that should be agreed upon by the village board. I think resident trust and communication kind of go hand in hand. It's harder to separate those, but I think it can, it can be done just by by measuring, you know, little surveys here and there, and maybe you put out four surveys throughout the year of of, you know, how we're doing and communicating and do you trust the information that you're being presented? And that allows you at least four ways to 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 gather that information and and to put down a kind of a line in the sand to say, you know, the first time we put out the postcards, we only had 10 people that said they trusted the information. And by the third quarter, you know, we had, you know, 50 or 60. So it it becomes measurable in that way. I'd like to see, you know, the quarterly newsletter come back. I understand it's very, it's, it's very time consuming for the person that has to organize it because they have to do a lot of follow up and they have to do a lot of cajoling and prodding and reminding, hey, I need your article, hey, I need your article by X date, and then get it written up and 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 get it together so that it can be posted. It doesn't need to be necessarily printed, but it could. And we already have a a manner in which we can get information out to the residents four times a year because we have now a water bill that goes in an envelope. Where before we had a water bill that was on a postcard, and we were always wondering how much information we could put on a postcard, which wasn't very much. Now we have the ability to get up to a certain weight within that envelope before it starts costing more money, you know, per mailing. We're already doing that mailing in some cases, in most cases. So why not use that that mailing cost that's already there to provide more information to the people for either things that are coming up or as part of that maybe quarterly newsletter communication as well? And then after a while, people will start going to the website to read it rather than, you know, having that 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 piece of paper. So, you know, there's, there's ways to measure the communication by expanding the amount of communication you're having, whether it be through a quarterly newsletter, it can be an app in which you can, you know, ask a question directly to the comments page or an app that gets your your question or your comment directly to the comments area so it can be part of the village board, public information portion. And another way to provide that service, and I I know that it's, it's an older technology and it's not, it's not the way of of the future, but, you know, we have a lot of issues with channel 25. And we have one resident that lets us know that in in a very polite way, but she has been communicating with us in regards to how effective it's been, how well it's been being, how she can hear it and any information that is presented on that during the week. And I I don't know if members of the board know it or not, but, you know, for a long time since, since the holidays, there really hasn't been any information on channel 25. And maybe not a lot of people read it, but those that do tend to count on it for the information that they're getting from it. So one way to measure, you know, our communication goal would be to get a a a working and and continually working channel 25 because that also discerns that information. It gives you another opportunity to put out the information. So you have it on TV, you have it on your website, you have it as as, you know, a quarterly newsletter. But with the communication, what we should look at as a goal for is the residents to communicate back. It's not just us pushing out information, it's also got to come back to us so we know where the issues are and we know where where we need to provide a better service. So it's got to be both us discerning the information and at the same time gathering information so that we can effectively provide the service that the that the residents are expecting. So that's again measurable. How do we, how do we create either an app or or some sort of of opportunity for the residents to come in and provide us information on need? Now, I know we have that, that one software, and I I forget the name of it off the top of my head, but we have that one as a good starting point. And as we start getting our other system up for 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 accounting, I think there's modules in there you could turn on that would allow that as well as part of a CRM system long term, but that that could be also as part of that that goal, you know, for communication. Resident trust, again, I would, I would measure it with with the survey, pushing out a survey and and you can start it four times a year and you can, you know, you can put a notice of, hey, come to this, this area on our website, you know, within the water bill and and please let us know how we're doing. And within that could be a question of, you know, do you trust the information that comes out of the village, you know, and at what level? And we start with something basic. We might as well hear the hard news because I think the hard news is, I think we all know it, we just need to hear it, that there is somewhat of a mistrust with the village board, and how do we build that back? And how do we make sure that what we're providing to them and what we're communicating to them is accurate, timely, and consistent?
Trustee Jan Miller.
I just wanted to, great points, President Walter. The communication, it absolutely has to go both ways. So as we're talking about this, I realize that we already have like a little business model within our village. The library board is going through a strategic plan right now. And I think those, we're using WILS, which is the Wisconsin Library Services, and it was very economical, but it helps you set a five-year plan. And I think that it's something that directionally we can use. And to start with that, we just started on Friday, community conversations, and it's a small group of people that come in and give their opinion about the library. Why can't we do the same thing about the village? It's about people that use the library, non-users, users, et cetera. And it's a small group of a dozen people. But ahead of this, as I mentioned in the last village board meeting, we had an online survey, and the strategic partners said, we suggest you get 600. Our director of the library, Tricia Smith, said, our goal is going to be 1,000, and we're going to hit it. So the more feedback you get, the more information you get. And then what WILS does is they put it in a format that we can discern what people want for expressly for this, the library expansion. So everything that we ask for will be measured. So it's something to think about. Thank you.
Other questions, further comments? Trustees? Trustee Rick Miller.
I think we have a good basis here right now. The the four goals that are identified are good goals. And when we met with Administrator Krecklow last week, I think they, you know, they, they kind of do the same thing. They they go hand in hand with the goals that we've identified with him. So not specifically the same, but I think they, they really go hand in hand with both. I think at this point, what we should do, though, is is really think about it and try to quantify it for our next meeting and see how we can quantify some of these goals and and move on that way. I don't think we can come up with all the answers tonight. So that's what I would like to see is, is everybody do some homework and see how we can quantify this.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? We will move on to agenda item F.
Before we, before we do, can can we make it as part of next, next month's or next meeting agenda? Make sure that it's on the next meeting agenda and at least have that as as part of resolve. Deanna, is that, can you get that taken care of for us, please?
Yes, I have that.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Which one?
Go, go ahead, carry on.
Item F, employee manual.
Motion to approve.
Aaron, did you came here, did you want to speak? You sure? Usually a rule that you show up, you have to speak. You are, you are not following the rules. Make a note in her record that she does not follow the policies that she has established. Give her a raise, okay. Excuse me, we have a motion. Did I hear a second? A motion and a second. Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, just one comment. This, this did come through general government and finance and was recommended for approval by the full village board.
Trustee Meyer.
Along with what Rick just mentioned was that this is just one particular section that we're taking each section that is presented to us to approve, and then eventually you have the, going through the whole particular manual. Is that correct, Aaron, for the most part?
Oh, see, see? You should have just came up when I asked you.
Great attachment.
Okay, so no, I've been going through this since October and updating it. There were some things that Trustee Meyer has suggested that we change. So we're always going to be looking at this document and updating it and making sure it's relevant for our employees. So there are some things that we have discussed about removing, but at this time, because there's so many things in there that really needed to be changed to make it more present so that new employees coming into our organization understand what they're getting themselves into. I really thought that we should get this approved first, and then we'll go forward and and do the changes that we needed.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item G, KOA Hills Utility Data Conversion. Who's running this? Administrator Krecklow.
Speak to this. This is related to the implementation of the new utility billing system that was alluded to in this conversation. We are, as I think everyone on the board is well aware, we're hurting from the cobalt-based 1990s era billing system. One of the critical and most difficult, one of the critical components to success of the project, which is also one of the most difficult, is pulling data out of the old system, formatting it into the structure that's necessary for the new system. When we talked with our implementation vendor, this is something that is, it's outside of the scope of our contract. Them, we asked if they had any recommendations of firms that they worked with who had experience on this type of a project and this issue before, they recommended bills. We did, 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 we did,[1546.92]
And then on the, um, on page 239, there are also quotes for Energy Government Finance HCM. So could you explain what those other three data points are or what quotes mean? What do they mean?
Sir, other modules of the system that we're implementing. Koa Hills did give quotes on those other modules. At this point, we've we're not asking for that. My hope is that as we we learn from going through this first module and data conversion. With utility billing is one of the more difficult modules for data conversion. HCM is probably one of the other more difficult conversions. As we get better at this and we learn a little bit more about how to convert the data, that we won't need additional resources. They did provide that quote for the others, but we're not asking for approval of that at this point.
So it is possible that you'll come back and ask for some of these other modules because we will be getting these other modules, correct?
We will be implementing those. I'm working that we don't need it. That's but possible that we might need some additional assistance on other modules.
Um, is it possible for the Village to hire somebody full-time? Would that be more economical?
Probably difficult to find someone with skill set to willing to, first of all, I don't think we need someone full-time. We're talking, this is 200 hours. It's one module. Know what the total was for all the modules, but I'm guessing less than half of a of a, you know, of an FTE. And and the position would go away when we're done with the occupation, so. I I just off the top of my head, I wouldn't say it would be impossible, but I think it would be difficult to find someone that we could hire as an employee.
Anything further, trustee?
Uh, that that answers my question. Thank you.
President Walter?
Steve, I didn't hear the amount. You kind of cut out. What was it the amount for?
$40,000.
3,000?
Forty.
40,000?
Forty.
200 hours, you said?
Correct.
Okay, and I mean that this is the first module that we're turning over and it's the financial module, which is kind of one of the most important. It would be, um, it's it's highly important that we get this right. So there's the possibility that the information could be mistranslated. Or how much of it needs to really come off? Does it, is there a legacy there that 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 we need to have? Or is there, you know, ever a point where it's just fresh start?
Well, and and we try to eliminate in the project, we try to eliminate as much data being brought over from old systems as possible. One of the utility billing, which is the module we're talking about, is a little bit different. We do need to bring over some customer history and and some of that data so that we're able to answer questions when people call about their bills. And we do have a lot of a lot of calls about the bills. But there's there's more data that we need to bring over, a bit more complexity to the data because it includes more fields. Example, like accounts payable is is relatively straightforward. I don't think would present as much of an issue, but utility billing is is one of the more difficult data conversions and it's and it has a direct impact. On the how well we do with this data conversion has a direct impact with how good of customer service we're going to be able to provide when when residents are calling in. Asking questions about their their.
Further questions, further comments from the board? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Roll call votes. Okay.
Trustee Myers. Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller. Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper. President Walter. Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, Item H. 24-hour vehicle use for the water utility foreman position. Administrator Crecklow, is that you?
This was an item that was for the.
E-Twin.
At their last meeting, may recall that recently modified a couple of positions in the Public Works Department created. Foreman positions within the utilities and the reason for that was to try to, for purposes of succession planning, to create some more depth within those organizations that, you know, they're they're critical to continue to operate. Staff leave, employee retention, I believe was another part of of upgrading those those two positions. This is a request from the water utility to include the new water utility foreman position as part of the village's 24-hour vehicle use. The the village has defined several positions with the village, within the village as emergency response positions, the police chief, the fire chief, the the three dependents from Public Works, as well as highways, building and grounds, foreman position. Some extent because of a quirk of reorganizations was included in there as well. All of those positions, while they don't respond to every call, every every night that there's an issue, are responsible that when there are emergencies, when those unusual things come up, when those difficult problems come up, at weekends, nights, that they they do resolve the issue. As a result, the the village has given them, allowed them to take home their vehicles, which include tools and other things to make it more efficient and and effective for them to respond in those emergency situations. This request would be to include the water utility foreman in that group that is authorized to 24-hour vehicle use for the.
Trustees?
We're going to mention the letter?
Mention the letter? Do you like to read the letter? You would like me to read the letter?
Go ahead, President. Ask our village attorney about that.
Ask our village attorney about that. Can we read this letter? Or?
I'm just not sure how valuable it is, given that there's no name or anything associated with it. As long as we recognize that whatever you want to do with it, it's fine.
Okay. So would everybody like me to read it or let it go?
I'd say read it. I mean, obviously, this person's really upset about it. It sounds like they have a lot of internal knowledge about what's going on.
Okay, I will go ahead and read the letter. This came from an anonymous resident. As a village resident, I am questioning why the board is being asked to allow foremen to take village-owned vehicles home. I have been following village meetings for years and even questioned why foremen are being changed to salaried employees. I do not understand the reasoning and why nobody would give the dollar value at last month's meeting when asked of what this person's increase wage is going to be. Moving from an hourly employee earning overtime and being on call every few weeks to becoming a salaried and earning no overtime, getting straight pay 40 hours, no matter how many extra hours they work each week and not being on call. If the fire department foreman, or if the department foreman is on call 24/7 as they keep indicating, why do you have hourly staff on call weekly? Do the superintendents not want to do the job they are hired for? I want to know why the superintendent takes their vehicles home as well. Other municipalities do not allow taking vehicles home. As far as the police chief and the fire chief, they are a separate entity. In the past, village employees who were allowed to take their vehicles home were caught using the vehicles for personal use on their way home from work and on weekends. And that is why they were taken away. Where there is an after-business hour emergency, call 10. The village policy is for the police department to call the hourly person on call first and they come in. So if this is true, then why would the 24/7 foreman need a vehicle since the problem is already being addressed by the on-call person? I am sure 99% of these problems are handled by the hourly on-call person and the foreman superintendent never come in anyways. Even a huge emergency like a water main break, the hourly on-call person is called first and they come in to see what the situation is. Do the hourly employees who are on call that week get to take the vehicles home? There are so many questions that the village board needs to have answered to answers to before they keep allowing village-owned vehicles to go home with the employees. My tax dollars are being spent foolishly. Again, that is from an anonymous resident. Okay, with that. Trustees? Comments? Mr. President, comments, questions? Trustee Kaminsky.
Uh, as we said, this came before the Public Works Committee and we moved it on without a recommendation. Because there was sort of this kind of back and forth as to myself personally even being surprised that that vehicle had come with the foreman after we had approved the salary and the and the promotion. I didn't know the vehicle was even attached to that because that never came out in discussion, even though it was attached to it in the past, I guess. But I wouldn't know that. So I just was taken by surprise. And that's when I asked, okay, who is on call and how far away do they live? I mean, wouldn't they have to come to Germantown from outside the village anyway? And they could stop and get tools and things. So I mean, I was one of the people that just didn't understand it, I guess, how many people have vehicles. I think we need a little history here about how, what, four years ago, I guess it is, or five years ago? Our foreman used to have vehicles, then we took them back and gave them money. And now we started giving vehicles back again in the last couple of years. And it's, what are they doing in other communities? I'd like to know what other communities are doing. Who does get to take vehicles home? How often are they used? I know I passed one of our Germantown vehicles on the way to the airport on the interstate on Monday. So I mean, I, who was it? I don't know, but it was certainly one of our pickup trucks going somewhere. But so what's, I think we need to have to maybe review that policy, but it's that's just my opinion.
Good. Further discussion? Is there any input? Administrator Crecklow, you can give us on a history of who gets vehicles, why they get vehicles, why we took them away?
I can I can give you the some of the histories I understand it. There, the the policy has initially did list two utility superintendents and then a superintendent of building and grounds and a superintendent of highways that were identified. The two, two of those superintendents were consolidated into one foreman, but they kept the two vehicles, so the foreman ended up keeping one of one of the vehicles. My understanding is that there was, I don't know what format it took with the village board. Superintendents, and none of whom are here any longer. Superintendents who were involved in, or at least two of the superintendents who were involved in that discussion are are longer here. Did request an increase in pay. I think that there was a discussion at the village board level, a trustee who is no longer here made the recommendation, we'll give the increase in pay, but then they. I would suggest to the board, question of whether the staff take their vehicles home should be a question of what based on on what your expectations are as far as emergency response. I would, this is, should not be seen as a a benefit or a perk or or anything like that. In fact, under IRS code, it's specifically not treated that way for for certain types of positions. Policy does state that the vehicles cannot be used for any personal use. And if that is, if they are determined to be using it for personal use, there are disciplinary actions that will be taken in those cases. But I think the question for the board is is one of of emergency response. And it's important or or necessary for particular employees to have their vehicles at home to respond. Agree with the letter, they're not, the letter was correct on the process. You know, the the police dispatchers will first call the hourly employee. But that is something that rotates through the hourly employees. And when there are major issues or complicated issues, the foreman or the superintendents are called in. It does happen on a regular basis and they're expected to respond to those. So it it's it is a question of of what the board wants, emergency response, and whether the board believes it's important for this group to have vehicles appropriate manner to, uh, emergency situations come up and they're needed.
Thank you. Let me go to President Walter first.
When I first got on the board, foreman had had the ability to take their vehicle home. And then there was a discussion on on increases. And I thought through that discussion, it it came out, and maybe I'm thinking or remembering it wrong, that there wasn't as much of a need for the supervisors to have their vehicle at home. And if it made the difference of their increase or the vehicle, they'd rather have the increase. So I think that's the way that that it it transpired is I remember it. I could be wrong, you know, my my memory isn't what it used to be. But right now, it's it's, the vehicles don't go home, right? I mean, is there anybody that is taking a vehicle home?
The the current policy is that they are allowed to take their vehicle home and and superintendents, some of the superintendents do take their vehicles home.
Okay, well, then that's changed for as I understood it because I had understood that nobody was taking their vehicles home. And that's how it was in regards to how the increase came about. How that changed, I would be interested to know or what I missed that that made that change happen. The second question is, is there GPS available on any village vehicles?
Yes, are they on, is there GPS on? There's not GPS on these vehicles. There there are on others. And and if I can just, just to clear up the issue, the policy was never changed. The employees who were in the superintendent positions at that time agreed not to take their vehicles home in exchange for the pay increase, but the board never changed the policy. Is the situation. So the the change that was made was specific to the at that point, the board didn't.
It seems somewhat open-ended. I I don't know. I don't remember it being that open-ended, but again, I could be wrong. Okay, well, if they want to take the vehicles home and if the policy for for the IRS says it can't be used for personal use or whatever, there are inexpensive ways to track vehicles now. And in most cases, it can work with a phone app on either the supervisor or or within dispatcher, wherever you want to place it, on whose ever computer you want to place it on. It it clips under the board or under the dashboard or or under the engine. And if we want the ability for for the supervisors to take their vehicles home, then I would I would recommend, and not that it's a trust level. It's it's a it's a discussion and a trust between the village and the employee that we put GPS on them. And then there's no question that they're not used for anything else. And anybody else that has an issue with it, whether it's a resident or a supervisor, you you've got a record that tracks it. End of discussion. And if they feel they need it for those for those emergency situations where they need to be going in on, that's fine. I can understand that. I'm not wanting to make two stops. It was part of the reason that we turned a large part of the fire department over to full-time from, you know, from paid-on-call because of the time it took for the paid-on-call to get to the department and get on a truck and then head to the emergency. And if you got a large water main break going all over the street, you want somebody there as fast as you can. So I I can understand that, but I I think it goes, you know, it goes hand in hand that that we we also put GPS on them and that way it keeps everybody honest.
Trustee Kaminsky.
I just, and maybe I'm not thinking about this right, but something you said, President Walter. GPS is a good idea, but beyond that, we have X number of vehicles in the village that we seem to be purchasing every couple of years. And we're putting a lot of miles on these vehicles if they're going back and forth home with an employee every day. I'm assuming it is every day. And we have to factor that in because I I would think the majority of our employees probably do not live in Germantown. So these vehicles could be tracking quite a few miles. And that would be like somebody offering me a vehicle to go to my job every day. I would say I would love to have that. And sure, I'll just go to my job and back, but that saves me one bundle of money. And how often do you actually, I I'd like to see how often we have emergencies where the person, the first call person, who is probably, I don't know, maybe a union member who's already here. How often does that person not make it to whatever that emergency is? How do we rate these emergencies? What are other communities doing about this? I mean, these are all questions I think we have, and I think perhaps we need to look into this more closely and send it back to Public Works and really analyze it and see what's going on.
Did it come out of Public Works?
Did, to get the opinion of the village board because it is such a messy issue, the way it's gone back and forth over the past five years. Because I remember it as you did, Dean. Everybody wanted to have the money and not the vehicle. And now you're, now they have the money.
Now we're hearing it's both. And now it's both, yeah. Okay, I I.
Trustee Meyer.
I was going to agree with you, Terry. I would make a motion and send this back to the public works to have a lot of information given to that committee so they can make an intelligent decision. Present it back to the board.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Send it back to the committee. Research it and gather additional information.
There's no other motions on the floor, correct?
No.
I almost think we should just, to me, this just, we already had the discussion, we already have the information we need. I'd say it doesn't even need to go back to Public Works if they vote on it tonight. Why are we going to send it back so they can ring it back to us?
Trustee Rick Miller.
Well, it's because the topic or the the subject is for one truck, one vehicle, not for all of them. So we cannot make a change to what's on the agenda and make a decision on all the vehicles. We can only do it on this one. So if it goes back to Public Works, then we can look at the entire thing.
Good, Rick.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Is it a roll call or just?
The money.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to Item I, J, K, and L. They are all going to be closed sessions, so I will read them all. Read them individually, make a motion, read the next one, make a motion. Okay. We will talk about it with each item. I'll read it, talk about who needs to be here, then, is that the same as this? Okay. Item I, Acquisition of North 116 West 15843 Main Street. The village board may enter into a closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then may convene, reconvene into open session and take such action as deemed appropriate.
Motion to go into closed session for new business, item I.
Have a motion and a second.
A second.
Who needs to be here?
The associate planner, as well as the public works director.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody need to be here?
And the village attorney.
Anna's not sticking around.
Before we move on, can I ask Administrator Kreckel if any of these should be taken out of order, or should we go in any order in order to let people get out of here sooner?
I think the order that they're in will work.
That is, right.
Just if I jump ahead, I think the same group for J, just the village attorney and I for K, just.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Yes, we have a second. Roll call, no, yeah, roll call vote.
Trustee Peeper. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go on to item J, acquisition of property in.
They have to look through all of them.
Yeah, okay. We're talking about the microphone issue. Okay, acquisition of property in the area of the intersection of Donjust Bay Road and Wasaki Road for a new Department of Public Works facility. The village board may enter into a closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent 1, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business. Whenever the competitive or bargaining reason required a closed session, and then may convene into open session to take such action as deemed appropriate.
Motion to approve new business, item J, to go into closed session.
With the same people for item I.
Same people from item I.
Motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote.
I.
Yes. I was going to ask that after all of them, at, at the end. Okay, do we need to go into open session?
He read it.
If deemed appropriate. If we decide we need to, we will. We may, okay.
Trustee Peeper. Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, Director of Public Works Retirement Agreement. The village may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and then move, may reconvene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
Motion to approve new business, item K, to go into closed session with the village attorney and Administrator Kreckel.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Peeper. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the final one, administrators' performance objectives. The village board may enter into a closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data, excuse me, of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
Motion to go into closed session for new business, item L, with only Administrator Kreckel.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller. Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, before we disconnect, what are we doing with the microphones now?
There's a separate link.
For the trustees who are on WebEx, we'll ask you to disconnect from, from WebEx that you're on to the one that I had this afternoon, turning off the broadcast, including the microphones here. Trustees in the room, some small spider mics that are, just get to try to speak into those in closed session so that the trustees who are on are able to hear you.
Okay, so it will give us, some people have already dropped off, gives a few minutes to reconnect, but the next regularly scheduled meeting of the village board will be on Monday, February 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in this room.
And we will not be going back into open session if there is action, correct? Meaning you're not going to go back online, won't be broadcasted.
Will not be broadcasted, going back into open session to broadcast. That brings the meeting to close.